Good morning. Welcome to the Gadsden City Council meeting. I would like to remind everyone to please make sure that all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gadsden YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gadsden City Council will now come to order. The Chair calls on City Clerk Iva Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilwoman Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Avery.
Here.
Councilwoman Back.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilson is absent today. Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilwoman Robinson.
Here.
We have a quorum present and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Latham to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we thank you today for life, health, and strength. We thank you for the opportunity to serve. We ask for your continual guidance and that you would lead us to continue to do the things that you have assigned to our hands to do. And we pray, Father God, and continue to thank you for love, unity, and peace within our city. We continue to lift our mayor before you. We continue to lift our city council before you, those who serve and work for our city. We just lift our city up before you at large and we ask that you would continue to bless us and that the very thing that you have purpose and will for this city will prevail. We pray this prayer in your son, Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The Chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session and city council meeting held on October 31st.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
Item six, the Chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of October 27th through November 2nd.
So moved.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
Item seven is reserved for proclamations and commendations. I have a couple today that I've invited. We will have, I want to recognize, we're inviting various departments from Gadsden City High School to come to city council meeting to share about their programs and today we're delighted to have our band director here today with some band students. This is Chris Benedetti. And Chris, if you'll come to the podium here and if your folks want to come with you, that'll be fine and I'll brag on you a little bit from 30,000 feet. I know you've recently won some awards and very proud of our band and proud of what all you guys and girls are doing for Gadsden City High School.
Oh, well, thank-
So the floor is here, is there a green light on that?
It sure is.
Good, great.
Thank you so much. I didn't realize there was going to be such a packed room. So we did bring some pamphlets and stuff for you all as well as a little thing, our little bag, he's going to be passing out. I wasn't 100% sure what I was going to get to say, so I will try to keep it brief, but I'm going to try to give you as much information about these kids as I can. Over the last three years, our program has gone from marching 170 to 221 members and with boasting 250 members in our concert program overall, which it takes up 19% of the school is participating in band and that's a 6% increase over the last three years. We're really proud of that. The national average only boasts 11% of bands or students involved in the band program in a school, so we're really proud of that. With that increase, you know, just came an increase in our budget, of course, you know, and through an increase of growth and inflation, our budgets also increased 46%. So you can imagine that gets a little tricky with 20% just being in travel. Taking these kids everywhere is quite a bit. But we want to say thank you to the city council who's continued to support us and help us as much as they can with their travel and things. You know, it takes a village. We boast that we run a small school in our end of the building, so you know, I have a lot of friends that are in administration that keep joking that we're basically admin down there, so we have quite a few of them down there. We're really proud of that. Now to kind of brag on them real quick. We have a tiered concert program, which we're blessed to have. A lot of programs can't do that. We have three middle schools that feed our program. We take all three of those middle schools, the ninth graders have their own class, get a chance for them to get to know each other because they've done three years of school not knowing each other and they come to this big school. It's our chance to get them all under one roof. They get to know each other, kind of play together and learn together. And then from there, they do an audition process into the next year where we have two separate programs to meet the needs and challenges of all the students so that they're not left behind and they're not bored. So we get to challenge them respectfully from that point on. Additional small ensembles that we have outside of our concert program, we have a saxophone ensemble, a brass choir, and then we'll be starting a percussion ensemble in the spring. So that gives them a little more individualized attention and gives them an opportunity to perform outside of that. Of course, our marching band is probably our most well-known, excuse me, but we had an undefeated season. As you can see, we had a very successful marching competitive season. On top of that, we did a lot of things. We were recognized for outstanding soloist on our show. We had special recognition for the highest general effect and musical effect in our performances. We've been selected to perform in the Philadelphia Thanksgiving Day Parade, which is actually the oldest Thanksgiving Day Parade over Macy's by six years. And there were only six bands selected and we're the only band from the South that will be attending, so we're very proud of that. With the marching band, we do have a performance on Friday. We hope you guys can all make it as we play Gardendale. You know, I tell the kids from this point on, you never know when your last performance is going to be, so we have to take advantage of every single one. So we'd love to see you there, give you a chance to see that award-winning performance. Through the marching band, we're adamant that our students perform public service, so we team up with Etowah Community Food Bank two times a year. The first time was, is always going to be the first Thursday of November where we do a big canned food drive. It's really an opportunity for the community to come see us, not on a Friday night, not at a contest, but be able to just bring canned goods for our community because we do, you know, our budget increased tremendously, so we do a lot of fundraising. We ask community for a lot. We want to be able to give back as well. So we had quite a few canned goods brought in and some money donated for that and I actually have more canned food in my truck for you, so we'll get that afterwards. But then we also do a springtime jazz event where we split the proceeds amongst Etowah Community Food Bank and ourselves and this will be the second annual. It's going to be Saturday, March 16th at the Pittman Theater. Our jazz band, under the direction of Mr. Brian Bangston, does an outstanding job. Silent auction dinner, it's a really good time, so we'll be pressing you guys a lot about that coming up. They also, our jazz band boasts performing at the JSU Jazz Festival. This will be their third year attending, which is really wonderful. And then that leads us to our Mid-South Marching Festival. If you've never been to Mid-South, you might not be from here. So we are excited that this coming year, September 28th, is going to be the 60th Annual Mid-South. And if you don't know what that is, it's our, it's the oldest marching festival in the southeastern United States, which is really, really fantastic. If you weren't around this last Saturday of September, we had cars probably triple parked all the way to the bypass. Please don't get upset with us, Police Chief. But there were a lot of people in attendance. We saw almost 10,000 people in the stadium that day, so I would argue it's one of the largest single-day events that happens in Gadsden and we're really proud that it happens We have a goal in our program to prepare the students for the future, future education opportunities and scholarships. You know, we're pushing our seniors to constantly be pre-prepping for that. I tell them all the time, I want you to keep going to school, but I don't want you to have to pay for it. So that's always our goal. But what we're most proud of in the last three years is our culture that we're cultivating here at Gadsden City High School. Many of the students struggle financially and I don't think that's any secret. And we've been very blessed that through the students, the community, the support of everybody around here, we've not had to turn a single student away due to finances. It is not normal to have students come into your office and say, hey, I know I did this fundraiser and I'm supposed to get XYZ money, but can I give it to this student instead? Or can we do this for this kid instead? And we're really proud of what the kids are doing there because that's not normal and that doesn't happen everywhere and we're really pumped about that. I'll leave you all with one last thing. We have, we kind of have a cornerstone for our system and it's our don't panic button. It's these little buttons with a little red, or these little pins with a little red button. When I first started teaching, I had a student with severe panic attacks and this was like their little awareness button. And when I got my first job, somebody gave me one and put it behind my desk as a don't panic button, like, hey, you got this. And that kid had a bad panic attack and I just pulled it and gave it to him and then I soon found out that every student wanted one. Not because they were having panic attacks, but they wanted that support system. And so what I've realized is that everybody wants or desires that support system. So if you come around Gadsden City, you'll probably see teachers, students, staff members, SROs, that all have these little red buttons on. And so we've been, you know, all of the kids get one. I keep a pile of them on my desk. I have them in all my jackets, on my backpack and whenever a kid's just having a bad day, they come and grab one. And it's not because they're having a panic attack, it's because they want to feel that support. And the band program here at Gadsden City has been able to be that support, not only for the band students, but I think we're slowly becoming a support system for the whole community. So it's probably what we're most proud of that we're doing here is creating young men and women who are going to go out to the workforce or go out into our community and make everybody proud. So thank you guys for having us out and if you ever need anything, I got a pile of buttons on my desk.
Oh, man, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for y'all coming. That trophy looks, was it heavy to hold that long?
You didn't mind holding it, did you?
Listen, to you three young men, thank y'all for what you're doing, for setting the pace for others in the band. You being here today lets us know how much more we need to support y'all. I've been to Mid-South Festival in the heat and the rain and everything else, but it's a beautiful event and you are correct, it is the largest attended event in the City of Gadsden when we have that many people there. But I would put our band up, and I'm going to say this, Brett, don't get mad, but up against Jacksonville State. I think our band's phenomenal and I think what y'all do is phenomenal and I love seeing the performance that y'all are able to perform every Friday night when we're at the ball field. So y'all keep it up and congratulations.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Anyone else, any comments? Chris, I just, we haven't met personally yet, but I know you're good friends with my family, which are all JSU marching Southerners and all I hear is great things about you and now I see why. Man, what a great presentation, what a great band program and just, and really, you could almost remove the word band, but just what a great program because yes, you're teaching music and many other things, but you're molding young men and young women to be productive citizens for the rest of their lives. And so for that, you should be applauded and you students should be applauded as well. It's not easy being in the band. My son and, our son and daughter were in the band at Gadsden City High School and a lot of hard work. That asphalt in August or July gets pretty hot when you're working on that new program, that new show. So, but thank you so much for what you're doing. We're very proud, as the mayor said, very proud of you, very proud of our high school, very proud of the program that you are presenting and just glad that you're here and glad that you're amongst us. And I know you, at any moment now, your phone may ring and you may need this red button because y'all are expecting a baby any moment, right?
Your first.
Your first, oh, well, you might need this one back. Here, let me give this to you. You got one. Well, blessings on your wife and of course blessings on yourself and your family as it expands. And students, thank y'all. Thank you for what you do for your school and for yourself and for your families. I know your families are proud of you and this body of council members, we're proud of you all, so thank you so much. All right, well, we'll move into the next guest today. It's the Etowah County Food Bank, as it would be, and Marie Johnson is Executive Director and she has some folks along with her, she'll introduce them. If you don't know Marie Johnson, you're about to. And y'all, Gadsden would not be what Gadsden is if there wasn't Marie Johnson in Gadsden because this isn't the only thing she's ever done. She has done numerous things and we'll let the, I think they've got to go back to school, so it's, or, but Marie, thank you for being here today-
Thank you very much.
And I'll let you introduce who you've brought-
Sure, we have a lot of people and of course I hope you just noticed that we are partnering with the band. That is their community outreach and I thank Chris for being such a great partner. That's something that's never been done and, you know, I like doing things that have never been done, as y'all well know. So today I want to just personally thank Mayor Ford and the council for all of their support. As you well know, the big truck is out front and I told someone, it's been kind of like birthing a baby. It took a pretty good while to get here, but the bottom line is without the support of the mayor and council and of course Ruth stepping in and finishing the project and Asia helping finish the project, this will save thousands of dollars that can now be put into food. That is my whole mission. We need food in this community. Councilman Smith can just nod his head and echo the amen, but we're doing everything we can do to get food into this community and by having the truck and agencies and church partners have been paying 140 to 180 dollars a month to rent a U-Haul to go get food, now they'll put gas in the truck. So that is a tremendous difference and that will make a difference in this community. I know y'all distributed food today, we're doing it every month. New Destiny has partnered with us. We're doing 100 families in North Gadsden, we're doing 100 in East Gadsden and that's a grant we got from Community Food Bank in Birmingham that I got for two years at no cost and they delivered to both locations. So we're doing everything we can do to get food into this community. The truck is tremendous to be able to put money into food and not into transportation. Also safe, and I'm going to call his name, but Kent backed, right after I took the job and Cassandra, my daughter-in-law is here, Circuit Clerk, who you don't say no to your daughter-in-law, and when she approached me about going back to work and I said to Kent at the very first meeting, I said, what's the big deal? He said, Marie, we have got to have stable transportation. It is not working. Tires are blown, we're on the side of the road with a truck full of food. We had a long conversation that night and the wheels started turning from there. Lee Bean, the first day I met with him at Catholic, the first thing out of his mouth was we've got to have a truck. This is not working and it's not safe. One of the ones from First Baptist blew tires, they put too much in their car. That could have been a disaster. We don't need to have that happen ever, ever, ever. So we appreciate so very much your support in helping make this happen and of course HUD being a component of that, so we are glad to have them and support from them to do that. We knew it had been done in other communities, HUD had done that in other communities, so we're thrilled with that. Today, my guest, we have a group from Westbrook High School and their teacher is Ms. Blevins and they are student government and they have this morning been to Catholic Center of Concern Salvation Army and that All Baptist Mission Center before they came to council and they've not ever been to a council meeting. So we're glad to have them with us today. They are a part of our future. We got a bunch from Family Success, which y'all know is my old world. Molly just walked in with my United Way world. So again, the support we have in this community, that's how we get things done. So I just want you to know how much I personally appreciate you. Right after this, we're going to make a real quick ribbon cutting out front by the truck, so please join us out front and I just thank you for everything that you do for this community.
Well, thank you, Marie, and thank you to Westbrook students for being here. You're the SGA folks. If you'll please stand, we'd like to recognize you here with the SGA at Westbrook. Thank y'all for being, thank y'all for being here today. And Ms. Cassandra Johnson is with us today. She's in the back right there. She is the Circuit Clerk of Etowah County. She is Iva Nelson's counterpart, if you will, and I don't know how the county's doing right now because you're not there, Cassandra.
I've got him on the phone.
You got him on, okay. Well, we appreciate you being here and I don't want to leave anybody out. Is Lee Bean here? Did he make it?
He's going to be outside.
He's going to be outside, okay. Lee Bean is the Director of the Catholic Center for Concern and is just a wonderful servant of the Lord and has a great ministry there at St. James on Chestnut Street. Everybody knows where that is, across from the post office, so we appreciate Lee. All right, well, let's, thank y'all for being here and thank you, Marie, for all that you're doing. I don't want to leave out Ted. Ted's sitting back, he's always quiet, but he's the rock, Ted Johnson. He's a good friend and is quite the fellow, so thank you for being here too. And Ms. Blevins, thank you for bringing your students. Thank you for teaching, first of all. My wife, son, and daughter-in-law are teachers, so thank you for what you do and it's a noble job and noble task and you're educating our future. Those of you from Westbrook, you can sit up here one day. You can sit up here in Gadsden or you can sit in your, if you move, if you're in another city, I hope you don't move, I hope you stay in Etowah County, but this is where it starts. You may have heard me say earlier, I was the SGA president, where's Ms. Councilwoman Latham? I was the SGA president at Discu Junior High School back 120-something years ago, probably. And so you got to start somewhere, so y'all have started. So welcome to the world of service. You've got an eye full today at the agencies that you visited. Those are wonderful agencies that help those that are a little less fortunate maybe than some of us. So thank you for what you're doing. I hope you take that back with you and hope it changes your life. Thank you so much. Well, all right, thank y'all for being here. We will now move to item number eight on our agenda, which is called Unfinished Business. Eight A is an ordinance authorizing conveyance of property to the Gadsden Land Bank Authority. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. This would convey 20 city-owned properties that are currently vacant or underutilized to the Gadsden Land Bank Authority. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance. Is there any discussion?
So Mr. President, this is transferring the property to the land bank to allow them to get some operating cash after they sell these properties, so the land bank will be up and running and we're ready to do business.
All right, well, that's what we want to see. That's, as the mayor, one of his visions, part of his vision is to move these empty lots and to make them something good for the neighborhoods, whether it's a neighborhood garden, whether it's a community garden, whether it's a house, or just a lot that is kept up. And so that's a, that's a good direction to be moving in. Any other comments? All right, Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, now this will be an interesting one for the SGA folks. Item nine is a little bit out of order, so I'm going to ask our city clerk, Iva Nelson, to help guide me through this so we do it correctly, so it's done properly. I'll start reading. It's, "We're not able to conduct a public hearing today due to a problem in getting the legal notice published. The ordinance will be presented today for the first reading and the public hearing will be conducted at next week's meeting on November 14th. This ordinance amends City Code Sections 106-87 and 106-88 regarding solid waste collection and disposal, including transfer station and inert landfill user fees. It allows an owner or occupant to obtain a disposal permit to place large household goods curbside at a cost of $100 with additional fees if the capacity exceeds a four-yard dumpster. Disposal permits and scheduled pickups will not apply to rental property move-outs or residential cleanouts. Exemptions from garbage fees are defined in Section 106-71 will apply to the cost of obtaining a disposal permit. The ordinance also establishes a $10 usage fee in addition to $50 per ton fee for use of the inert landfill by other municipalities, private collectors, or non-residents. City residents will pay a discounted fee of $5 if dumping from an automobile or truck that weighs less than 3/4 ton and is not a flatbed. All users will pay a $1 per ton ADEM fee and a $2 per ton environmental fee. The fee for use of the transfer station will be $50 per ton or $10 per ton above the city's contracted cost, whichever is larger." That go, okay? All right. So at this point, we need a motion to-
We won't have any motions today. It's simply the first reading and then at next week's meeting, we will allow public input.
Input, all right. Thank you very much for that. All right, so we'll move to item 10 in our agenda. This is a resolution awarding bid number 3524 for the 2024 City of Gadsden Annual Drainage and Concrete Work Contract. No bids were received and the city engineer negotiated through an informal bid process. He has recommended awarding the bid to Bob Smith Construction, Incorporated. This will establish unit pricing that can be utilized as needed. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Is there any discussion?
So Mr. President, this is something that Heath Williamson and our engineering department continues to do an excellent job. Unfortunately, we didn't have anybody bid, but everybody's familiar with who we know as Free Bird. That's his nickname, but he works with us all the time. If you notice, he did the gorge steps at the mountain, at the falls. He's also doing the complex. There's a bid letting today on Phase Four and I'm sure he'll be bidding in that process too, but he's very reasonable, so we're excited about entering this contract.
I think he's done some excellent work for us. He kind of finished up the East Gadsden Community Center when there was a issue there-
With the bond.
With the bond and prior contractor, so the company is, I think, very reliable and I know Heath keeps good tabs and I think it's a good idea to move forward with that. Any other comments? All right, Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 is a resolution rejecting all bids for bid number 3528 for the 2023-2024 City of Gadsden Landscape Maintenance Bid. Both bids received exceeded the amount budgeted for the contract and this rejects all responses and closes the bid file. Changes will be made to the specifications and the project will be rebid. The Chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution. Is there any discussion?
So Mr. President, we had two bids. The lowest bid was about $150,000 over what we budgeted, so it's just the cost of doing businesses continues to increase, unfortunately. So what we're trying to do before we come back to the council with another bid packet that we're going to try to rebid, we're trying to maneuver some things out of this job site for the bid and move it to Public Works to try to see if we can get a lower bid amount. Tina King is working with Howell and Heath and we're heading in the right direction, but we're trying to get this expedited because before we know it, it'll be grass cutting season again. And it's not just grass cutting, a lot of it has to do with the chemicals to the ball fields, a lot of it has to do, for example, Morana Park, the field out there is real wavy, needs to be compacted, filled with sand, so we're trying to clean up some things per se, that if our Public Works had to do it, it would take a lot of time and a lot of effort and then they're not budgeted for it either, for the materials. So we're trying to, we're trying to be creative and we budgeted a certain amount of this and we may have to skin this layer, you know, two years, so, but we're working on it.
All right, thank you so much for that information. Any other comments? All right, Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 comes under first reading. This is an ordinance amending City Code Chapter 18 regarding buildings and building regulations. This is to establish regulations for operating short-term rentals in the city. This ordinance has been presented today for the first reading and the council will vote on it next week. All right, item 13 is new business. I believe we have one item today.
Yes, Mr. President, this is requested by the Engineering Department, Resolution to Authorize an Application and Acceptance of 2024 Land and Water Conservation Fund Grant. To be brief with this, this is a possible grant from the Alabama Department of Economic Community Affairs, a grant assistance for the Land and Water Conservation Fund to develop a splash pad recreational facility located at 403 Tuscaloosa Avenue. This Land and Water Conservation Fund assistance in the amount of $500,000 or 49.54% of the total proposed project cost. There is also a meeting, just to go ahead and get ahead of this, there's a meeting on this coming Monday, 12:00 PM at the Gadsden Civic Center here downtown and asking all the community to come out and voice, be educated and voice your opinions, concerns, or like or dislike as it relates to this. Nevertheless, this property, there was a previous park on this property, which is the Joseph T. Robinson property, that the school board on, it was in desperate need of repair. It was taken down. Nevertheless, with the continuous efforts of creating a partnership, the city have been granted that property to continue something like this and the good nature of creating a fun, safe, family environment there on that piece of property. So I'm asking today for this to be considered as new business.
All right, there's a motion to suspend the rules and to vote on this. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
And I will ask that we continue as a passage.
All right. There's been a motion to move to adopt. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. That's all the new business that we have for that category. Item fourteen is department reports, committees, and boards. Do we have any of those today? Chief? Coming to speak to us is Fire Chief Will Reed.
Mayor, Council, good morning.
Good morning.
I have happy news today. I didn't come to grumble about anything. Our fire department is beginning our kickoff for the Toys for Santa program that we do every year. This is a mission of the fire department that was started many years ago before I was ever chief. Miss Lemons and Carrie Pentecost, they run our office at the fire department. They administrate the program, but it is truly a mission of the entire fire department. All the firefighters, in one way or another, work with this, whether they are helping to give out toys, sort toys, collect money. Our official kickoff is on Black Friday. We go to the Gaston Mall. We'll stand in front of the road from about 8:00 AM till dark, raising money. So, if you see us out there holding a boot, please stop and give, because this is not for the fire department. This is for the children in our community. Signups for this program is November twenty-eighth through thirtieth at 322 Walnut Street. That's our central fire station. The times for this will be ten to twelve, and then from 1:30 to three each day. You must live in the city limits of Gaston to participate in this program. We only serve children up until the age of fourteen. When someone comes to apply, they must have custody of the child, either be a parent or a legal guardian. They need to bring with them a current bill, birth certificate, social security cards, and if they have custody of the child, if they're not the parent, they need to have proof of custody. December fifteenth is the deadline for our donations. We take both monetary and toys. The toys may be dropped off at any fire station in Gaston. We ask that any monetary donations be brought to 322 Walnut Street and left with Missy or Carrie. Like I said, our big day for this is Black Friday. So, if everyone could come out and support, if you drive past the mall, drop a dollar or two in the bucket, and we would appreciate it. And if y'all have any questions, if I can't answer them, I'm sure they can.
All right. Thank you, Chief. Anybody have any questions or comments?
Thank you.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
It's a repeat. Would you repeat what the, for the requirements?
Absolutely.
Birth certificate.
Sure. What you must bring with you is a current bill, power bill, water bill, whatever, birth certificate, social security card, and if you are not the child's parent, you need to bring your custody paperwork. The child must live in the city limits of Gaston and must be up to the age of fourteen, from birth to fourteen.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Chief, thank you all, and thank you for what you're doing for our children in our community, year in and year out. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any other departments or committees wish to report at this time? All right. If not, we will have the remarks in Section fifteen, remarks by mayor and council. Mayor Ford, we'll let you kick us off.
Yeah, thank you very much. I want to say also thank you to somebody in the, the mayor's staff or city staff, is Ruth Moffett, for working with HUD and also working with the 501(c)(3) and what she does, and because she was able to help do some workaround on some CDBG funding regarding the project today, and also, she's a vital part, not just the food bank, but to all the 501(c)(3), and we appreciate you, Ruth. To Ms. Marie, thank you, and to Ted, and always to Sam, and to the Family Success Center. Thank you all. Y'all do an excellent job. I want to remind everybody tonight, it's the State of the City Address tonight at 6:00 PM. This is something that our staff thought was necessary, and it's nothing about me, it's about we. So, I'm anxious to see how the turnout is and what the, what the questions are. So, we'll be taking questions from the audience. So, fair game. We have a Veterans Day Parade tomorrow at 2:00 PM. Please come and remember to thank a veteran. I've enjoyed visiting the elementary schools. We've been going around all the elementary schools, John Moore and Christina. We are asking the fifth graders to name the two kangaroos, and we will announce those winners next week. And the two winners get a free year's pass at the zoo, or at the zoo, at the Knockaway Falls, and something else. I can't remember, but it's good. Tickets on sale now for Christmas on the Couso ice skating. If you notice, they're building the stage today. That's where TR is. That's probably why we have no air in here. But, the combo tickets are available on the city's website. So, if you want to do the Christmas on the Fall, Christmas at the Falls, and you want to do the Christmas on the Couso, I believe it's a five or $7 discount to do both. We want to continue to thank Public Works. I don't know if you've noticed, but they're lighting the trees, the Alabama City area, the Carver Community Center area, the streets for the Christmas lights, and Broad Street, and they're working on the tree outside. But also, we have an arborist going down Broad Street, cleaning up Broad Street, and, and we have a new tree crew that's about to start working on the Couso. So, we're excited about that. Sam Johnson and Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority are doing voter registration in front of City Hall tomorrow at, at noon, Sam? Around noon?
I'm, I'm.
Oh, Brett? Who's doing? One to three. Okay. So, I don't know. Who's doing the voter registration, Brett?
Not Brett.
Not Brett, not Sam?
Board of Registars.
Board of Registars, okay. All right. We, so there will be voter registration tomorrow for one to three here at City Hall. We know that. The fire department, I want to thank Chief Reed, he probably had to run out. But, y'all, yesterday, we were in a meeting. Fire trucks were going everywhere. I thought City Hall was on fire. And he, he just said, give me, give me one minute, and I'll tell you what's going on. And he said, well, we've had three calls. He said, in about another thirty seconds, we'll have another fire truck come by. Well, sure enough, here comes another fire truck. The brush fires are out of control right now because of the drought. So, we have a serious drought, not only in the whole state, but in the city of Gaston. And he, the fire department put out a ten-acre brush fire on Knockaway Mountain last week, and I asked him, what would have happened if we wouldn't have gotten to it? He said, we'd have lost a lot of homes on scenic. So, I don't think we realize the importance of what our first responders do do, but especially in this environment with the brush fires and with the dryness, the fire department, they're, they're running around like crazy until we get some rain. I asked him if the rain Friday would help. He said, it won't help until next week, when we have two to three consecutive days of rain. So, please don't burn trash in your backyard. We've had to give out fines for that, and we're not giving out warnings. We're giving out citations. It's just common sense. Right now, we can't afford to do that, and our fire department's wearing thin. So, I just want to put that out there. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Councilwoman Latham?
Thank you, President Beck. I just want to say to the mayor and to this council, congratulations on completing one year for five of us and two of us for five years. And it has been my pleasure to serve and work with you this first year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. Yes, thank you. We finally made it one year. Just want to say to Ms. Marie, thank you for allowing us to play a small part in all of the food distribution. Thank you all so very much. Unfortunately, I've not been able to make any because they're always on Tuesdays, but I know our people are always there on the ground. It's a blessing now to have our own truck. For those that maybe didn't get all of that information, we have our own truck now. That is such a blessing to be able to save some money any way we can. So, thank you. Ms. Cassandra, thank you very much. I think you've been a part of everything we've done ministry-wise, groundbreaking, ribbon-cutting. You're on all the pictures. So, we just want to give you a shout-out and tell you, thank you for always being present. Congratulations to the Titans, the band director, and thank you for sharing with us the growth of the band and all that you all are doing there in high school. We really enjoy hearing what's going on in our, in our local high school. Also, District Two, we have a meeting due to the State of the City tonight. We have a meeting on Thursday, 5:00 PM at the East Gaston Community Center. So, help us spread the word. We'll be there Thursday. And thank you, Public Works, the park on Golden Rock, the new lighting. It is obvious to all in that neighborhood. So, a lot of things you do, sometimes your, your name may not always get called for, but we're right there across the street from you. So, we see it when it gets dark, because we're there. So, I want to say a big thank you. Thank you, Mayor Ford, for all you've done this year. I know you've got a lot of things you're working on, and I know we hear a lot of that on tonight as well. So, I want to tell you, thank you. As well as President Beck, thank you for leading this council and all that you do, as well as the city council. So, we appreciate all of you. Thank you so very much. Happy Veterans Day to all the veterans. Thank you.
Councilman Avery?
Thank you, Mr. President. Thanksgiving bag giveaway, food bag can be delivered to Family Success Center Office, 821 East Broad Street in Gaston, no later than Friday, November the seventeenth. And it has a list here. I'm sure this is on the Family Success Center Facebook page and the Awal County Food Bank page as well. So, they can, you can see this list of items that are being asked, but I'm sure they are taking any perishable items also. If, food giveaway begins at 9:00 AM in the FSC, Family Success Center, back parking lot on Tuesday, November the twenty-first. So, please keep that in mind, and again, for those that have items that they don't mind sharing and give away. Want to give a big shout-out. I think they end their cemetery concessions there at Southern Hill Cemetery with Noah and the Eagle Scouts Project, I think, this past weekend, if I'm not mistaken. And so, I don't know if I did it, but I do want to give a shout-out to Noah and those Eagle Scouts and all of those volunteers that went up to Southern Hill Cemetery to help mark the sites of those unknown graves that have been there for quite some time, giving some much appreciation to those men and women that are there in that cemetery in much respect. To the youth group that is here today, being the youngest here on the, on the stage and, and enjoying every bit of it. And, because Kent, I love saying it, because Kent always say how old he is. So, let me say how young I am. Listen, and then I like to also mention this because found out about, if you all haven't met Brett Johnson, who I think is one marvelous addition to the mayor's administration. We went through the Youth in Government, not together. I think I'm older than Brett. So, he's younger than me. But, so, to take some heat off the, but we went through a, a program called Youth in Government with YMCA, and it was a great program. I think, I think for me, speaking for myself, it paved my way to, to this seat here today. And I think Brett could say, because Brett actually won a, a Great Prestige Award with that organization. I was first Director Homeland Security, along with top debater, went to Black Mountain, North Carolina, and then to the White House with some other stuff. So, your input, your steps that you're making right now today is necessary, especially in our climate and environment, in our processes that we make decisions, because sometimes we see people like Kent, who is old, making decisions for people like me who is young. And not that he doesn't know what he's doing. He, he definitely know, and we need people like Kent, who has wisdom and knowledge, but also, we need people like you, who has the strength to carry on and run the race and to pick up the torch and carry on the legacy. And so, it is good to see your faces in the place, because as President Beck stated, that you, too, can be here in these seats one day, or you can be in Mr. Johnson's seat one day, in any of the, any of these seats, whether it's city attorney, engineer, police chief, and, and the list goes on. So, good to see you here. Thank you to the leaders, to the teachers that thought of it, to bring you here to see this process, and hope that you're having a good time or learning something. Must say this, and hopefully I, I say all politically correct words. It is time, it's been past time to cease the nonsense of violence as it relates to our young people in this city. This city is too small to continuously have the number, and it's not a large number, but any number of killing is, is, is too much, okay? It is too much. It is unnecessary. And, and I am pleading out to those that are interested, because I, I do find out that some people are just not interested. But, I am, I am pleading to those that are interested to come up, help aid a solution to what our young people are looking for as it relates to entertainment, involvement, or whatever, that will help divert their energy of violence to something positive. And so, again, we're, we're creating the effort here coming up soon that I'll be able to announce, that we are asking people to participate and be a part of. But, to those young people, again, this is one of the reasons why I ran, is so that you could see someone that is close to your age, that is close to you, that is not too far removed in the community to where that you feel that you have a voice here on, or at City Hall. And so, please, you, you know how to reach me. You know where I am. If you don't, definitely, if you have social media, you will find me there. Please feel free to reach out to me, and let's have that conversation. I'm, I'm all up for it, because it is time out for this unnecessary violence. We're, we're sending too many young people to the grave, and we are breaking too many mothers' or too many parents' hearts, in, in both ways, for the one that committed the act and for the one that we're putting in the ground. And so, I'm asking that we put guns down, and, and we find another way to, to channel, re-channel our energy. There's, I'm almost finished. Give me one second here. Community Chili Dinner, join Councilman Larry Avery and Chris Colt, Sunday, November the twenty-sixth, 3:00 PM until. Want to thank all our sponsors. I won't announce them all, but I'll announce one, and that's Mr. Bobby Ledbetter at Twin City Cars. They're here, coming back on Megan Boulevard. It's just after Thanksgiving dinner. Listen, they are, believe it or not, a lot of people in this community that are hungry and that are going without. And so, we're just creating another effort to where that we won't mimic any of the Thanksgiving dinners, and we're just gonna just do something simple. It'll be a drive-by situation. As we get closer to the event, we will make more understanding of, of the, that day event. We're gonna have live music and, and, and many more things to be proud of, but just, it's just an effort to give back to the community, to give. And so, if anyone is interested and volunteer, please get with me, and then we'll go from there. And final notice here, Notice of Public Meeting, the Land and Water Conservation Fund Act 1965, Public Law eighty, eighty-eight dash five-seven-eight requires that the citizens be afforded the opportunity to express their views, concerns, the recreational needs of their community, provide a forum for discussion. An open meeting is being held at Downtown Civic Center, 623 Broad Street, Gaston, Alabama, at 12:00 PM on Monday, November the thirteenth, sponsored by the City of Gaston, Alabama. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilwoman Minatra?
We're excited that next week is Recycling Week. Wednesday, November the fifteenth, is actually the Recycling National Day. We are partnering with all of our schools, so eight elementary schools, three middle schools, and one high school. And we're promoting contests and education. We want to clean up our city. Recycling is a key part of that, and we want all involvement. So, support your school, support your children. We want to have fun with it, but it's gonna be a great week. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to thank everybody for coming out today. It's, it's always fun to see the chambers full, everybody watching us do what we do, and appreciate the council, appreciate the mayor. Looking forward to the State of the City Address tonight. And I enjoyed hearing about the Titan Band, the great presentation. I've been messing with this thing since you gave it to me. Mr. Bankston's actually one of my childhood friends. I've known him since, since we were little kids, but I know you guys do a great job over there. And looking forward to seeing this new food truck out front here in a minute. So, that's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Councilman Robinson. Want to reiterate some of the things. I'm in agreement with most of all that's been said up here. No, I'm just kidding. I'm in agreement with everything. Food Bank, thank you, Marie, and thank you for your staff. And I see two folks that have come in that I want to recognize. First is Renee Baker. She used to work here for the city for many years, and she was, she and I had the first conversation about the food truck some three, four years ago, something like that. So, thank you for your involvement in, in helping to make today's reality. I know when you pulled up out front, I'm sure you had a sense of pride in, in that. It looks great. And then, standing next to Ms. Baker is Lee Bean. Lee, I've already bragged on you, so... Lee, I've already bragged on you, so your ears were probably burning, but Lee has become a very good friend, and he is a friend to many. And Lee, your work at the Catholic Center for Concern does not go unnoticed, and most importantly, the Lord knows, and he knows your heart, but we know too. So, thank you for all you do and for those that are less fortunate in our community. Thank you very much for being here. To Gadsden City High School Band Director, Chris, I hope you haven't had a text saying, "Hurry up, come, I'm having a baby," because we're still going, but man, we'll be praying for you, and I too have been kind of dabbling with my, with my little red button here, so thank you for what you do. And I, you know, y'all, quick commercial for Chris. My family knows him real well. Chris is from Columbia, right?
Yeah, I think I'm from Columbia, South America.
South America, not South Carolina, but South America. Chris is bilingual, and if you look around our community, we have a lot of Hispanic in Gadsden and also at Gadsden City High School. So, what a blessing to have somebody that can speak to parents and can speak to students when they're, when they're new maybe to a country, or maybe there's a language barrier. So, I know you probably do a lot of things that we don't know about, how you help in communications with not only band students, but all the students at Gadsden City High School. So, thank you for your involvement in our community. We're very proud to have you here, and many blessings on starting your family here, probably this week, it sounds like. So, many, many blessings on that. Westbrook Student Government Association, thank you all for being here. Ms. Evans, thank you. I hope this has been beneficial. I hope you all have enjoyed it. And yeah, you too can sit up here and get a red button from fine people like Chris Benedetti from Gadsden City High School, but thank you for what you did this morning, and I know you've enjoyed seeing Lee Bean's operation there, and I bet you've learned a lot today. So, thank y'all. Thank you for being here. Also, want to wish all veterans, congratulations. My dad was a veteran, World War II. There's a lot of folks that are walking around that did a lot of things for this country that allow us to be able to walk around. So, thank you for those that have served, and thank you for those that are, that are serving. Little special note here, everybody probably knows Colonel Carl Harrison at Gadsden City High School. Colonel Harrison has been involved with ROTC program. I'm pretty sure it's over 50 years, and he's not doing well. He's ill right now, and so when you remember veterans today and you remember what we're doing this week, say a prayer for Colonel Harrison. He needs our prayers, needs our love and support. What a great guy. Man, he has done so much for so many students in this city. If we started talking about it, we'd be here for weeks. There are hundreds and hundreds of students that he has loved and nurtured and has made a better person. So, thank you, Colonel Harrison. Don't know if you're watching, but we love you, and we're praying for you. Last but not least, I think y'all see, we like to have a little fun up here, and it's, you know, it's not all business. I mean, it is business, and it's serious business. This is the people's business. This is the people's house. Our budget's $60 million, and we take it serious, but at the same time, we're humans, and we like to have fun. But as I was sitting up here listening, you know, to some comments and stuff, I look out there, and I see a lot of friends. Raise your hand if we went to school together at Discu or Gadsden High School. Where's my, where's my guys? There they are. Come on, don't be shy. There they are. There they are. That's, you know, kind of frequent visitors, and I appreciate y'all being here. I love looking out and seeing these guys. Y'all, these are guys I've known since the seventh or eighth grade. Yeah, that's right. I'm still young. That's, but well, they look a lot younger than I do, I can promise you. But we've had a long, really good friendship, and love you guys and glad you're here. You know, Councilman Avery and I have become buddies through this process. We all remember Clayborne Avery. He was your uncle or great uncle? Uncle. Uncle Clay, he was a classmate of ours, a great guy, and he went on to be with the Lord many years ago, but you know, Clay was a cool guy. He was a cool dude. And last but not least, there's one that used to come to the meetings. He's had a little health issue, but, and I'll go ahead and say his name, but Larry Suddles. Larry Suddles is recuperating from his health issues, and I bet you Larry's watching. So, Larry, I'm looking at the camera. I'm looking at you. Thanks for, oh, you do, man. I hope you get better soon. We need you back here. So, get well, and come on back here and tell us what we're not doing right, because we need to, we need some help. We need to know. We all thank you for being here today, and we will have a ribbon cutting out front. The Food Bank truck is out there. It's a beautiful truck, and Trim It Up did a nice job for us, so thank you for all you're doing for us, and y'all have a great week. We are now adjourned.